So, welcome everyone, thank you for coming. Welcome to Riverhead Locals' first-ever Riverhead Town Candidates Debate. My name is Denise Sibbelyti and on behalf of my husband Peter Blazel, who's that handsome man in the middle, and our children Katie and Courtney Blazel, representing the shareholders and directors of Riverhead Locals. I'd like to thank you all for coming out this evening, appreciate it. We welcome the candidates for office who are participating in this debate and we thank them and their families for being willing to sacrifice their time and personal lives for public service. It's a huge commitment, no matter what you do or how hard you try, you're always, always making somebody unhappy and you've got to have thick skins, you know, as do the people who love you. Sometimes folks get very carried away, especially at election time, so some grammar rules in place in tonight's discussion. For the audience, please be courteous, please turn off the ringers on your cellphones. I'll do that right now myself. Everybody can just vibrate together. Please don't have a conversation with other people during this debate and please, no heckling or jeering, I've seen that, or anything like that. This is a business meeting, not a sporting event, so please act accordingly. For the candidates, first off, please be civil, no name-calling or character assassination, no personal attacks if any kind, stick to the issues. Second, please cooperate with the timekeepers. Keepers? We have a cane to hook you, but we don't want to use it. Third, stick to the questions asked, please. We've called them very carefully from dozens of questions submitted to us from the community. There won't be any softball questions, but there won't be any gotcha questions either. We're sticking to issues tonight. We want a frank discussion of the issues that are facing this beautiful town we all call home. We'd like to know why you are the best person for the job of councilperson and we want to know how you will make for a brighter tomorrow and a better Riverhead. Thank you and let's begin. You have lived in Riverhead all or most of your life.
Yes.
What have you done in the way of community service and how important in your mind is it that to have prior community involvement as an attribute for town council?
My community service spans back to when I first started in, actually in junior high school, picking up litter on the beach. I organized the litter picking up group when I was a teenager, when it was first in style. And, well, it really wasn't in style yet, the environmental movement began in the 70s. And then after that, I spent the rest of my career as a volunteer on the Board of Directors for Park of Jurists, Geriatric Organization, for the Girl Scouts of Nassau County fundraising. I helped form the Honeycomb Breast Cancer Action Coalition. I have been on the Board of Directors of Lyrism Volunteers, I think I said. I have been involved in the Road Runners Clubs around Long Island raising money. So, I've really done a lot of community service and that's just part of what I've done as far as community service is concerned. The importance of community service to running for this election is that this election is grassroots and most of the groups that I've worked with, including breast cancer groups that I've worked with around the island, have been grassroots organizations. We started from nothing and we had to raise money from nothing and we had to ask for money from state organizations and federal organizations. That is going to be very important here because we are starting from the ground up. Riverhead needs help, our people are in pain. I'm here as a woman, the only woman running, having been on groups with very many different types of groups, raising money and also trying to find innovative ways to solve difficult problems like stopping cancer. I survived cancer, I was almost not here in 2003. I get what it is to be a survivor of cancer. I get what that does to you insurance-wise and health-wise.
Thank you. Wow, there's no mistaking that.
Do I have to wake up now and get my coffee in?
Yeah, the coffee's gone. And I would also just, as you reminded, make sure you look at the camera, not just me, because otherwise, you know, we are recording this for the website and for Channel 22, so that way people can see your faces instead of just your profile. Okay. All right, so, candidate B is James Wooten. Would you care to respond to that? What have you done in the way of community service? How important is that to you? And you have one minute.
Okay. I think it's very important, actually, to have a history with the town when it comes to community service, prior to elected service. I have one minute, but I started very early on in church. I ran a very successful youth group with many amongst our town when I was a youngster. From there, we started mission trips to St. John's Island in South Carolina for Habitat Humanity. I've been a member of the Country Fair for over 25 years. When I was a police officer, I created many enable watch communities as well as a Crime Division Councilman, got honored as Crime Division Councilman of the Year in 2003 for my work in that. I support lots of local groups, whether it's the North Fork West Coalition, East at Arts Council, there's lots of local groups that I support with my participation. And I just want to point out, I'm the only bald-headed man running for...
Get that out of the way right now.
Yeah, get him out of there.
Matt Van Glad, community service, how important is it and what does that mean to you?
I'll... Is this on? Can you all... There we go. Can you all hear me in the back row? No. Now, I'll try to speak louder. My name's Matt Van Glad and community service is very important and I think everybody up here needs to be commended for their community service, to step forward and to run for public office. It's not an easy job and there's a lot of work ahead of us and those in the past have done a lot of work. So, that there in itself, everybody here needs to be commended. I myself, I'm a member of the Democratic Party. I was in 4H as a kid and I learned a lot of the nuts and bolts of, you know, running a household and whatnot. I was active in the green market, bringing food to the poor and the homeless in the shelters. And I'm a member of the RVS Singers, where we support this Tara Stevenson Fund to combat domestic violence. So, I'm out there and I'm active in the community in my own way and I'm always that neighbor that's there to lending a helping hand and if I ever see somebody stuck on the road, it's probably a guy in a black pickup truck with a smile on his face that'll help you. Thank you.
George Gabrielson, what's the role of community service wise and important to a council?
I think it's very important. I volunteered about 16 years of my time in Recreation Advisory Committee. Our family's been here many years, we had farm tours, the Actonburg School, many years we gained farm tours and showed them, you know, different things were grown on the island. I'm a 41-year member, believe it or not, of Farm Bureau, in fact enacted a lot of the farm issues and it goes back, let's say, 41 years. I think even as a councilman, some of us have reached out outside of our jobs to contribute to the community. I know during the 2000 floods we had, I contributed our farm irrigation pump to Matterlane and we pumped there about six weeks to keep that road open. Originally, we had somebody come in and pump for about three days and they charged the town $16,000. Three days later, the water table was high, the water would come up and it could flood again, so I just put the farm irrigation pump. I helped with the community garden.
Valenda, community service, what's your record and why is it important?
It is very important. I can only give you my personal experience in moving to Riverhead. In 2007, when we were building our home, we had the misfortune of being the first house to be built in our community. One of 32 houses were built in our community. And if any of you had built a home or had dealt with a contractor, things go wrong. And we were running to the town building department, we were running downtown just to get basic answers because we were so new to the community. Finally, when our neighborhood moved in, we just got together and said, "We need to form our neighborhood communication." Just the three of us sat down in farm, a neighborhood community. And that was very helpful to bring our community together until we found the Calverton Civic Association, which we're all very happy to give our attention to. And as you know, the Calverton Civic Association has done so many good things here in our town. Thank you.
One minute to respond to anything you heard, you're up.
In addition to, I mean, I could go on about my volunteerism, but in the interest of time, I've spent up until the present also volunteering to fight corruption in our system of government, in the courts, in the state of work, and across the country. And I have become members with other people across the country who have been disempowered by the system on a state and federal level, nitty-titchery and also just in government in general. So, I've also been a whistleblower and I've also voluntarily done that for the people. So, I'm here to serve the people, I'm not here for myself. I've put myself on the line for you, the voters. I have no special interests, I have no special ties, I'm here strictly for you. Nobody owns me, nobody can tell me what to do. I'm here to work with the board and equal, as an equal member of the board, which we prefer, we're equal members of the board. Thank you.
Next question, first up goes candidate and incumbent James Wooten. You have two minutes. As the town ward's point man for the town animal shelter, you've grappled with the issues there for nearly all of your four-year term. Are we any closer today to solving the problems at the shelter than we were in 2007? Why or why not? And where do you see Riverhead Town Animal Shelter and Animal Control Program four years from now?
Well, thanks for the question. Yes, I think we're a better place now than we were four years ago. What was lacking four years ago was a comprehensive program with promoting adoptions, getting advertising out, to create a volunteer base, to have steady vets and vet techs, take a look at our dogs up there. There's lots inherently involved with an municipal shelter that you don't have with private shelters. The fact that we do volunteer surrenders from the town. So, unfortunately, when you have a municipal shelter, you take the dogs that nobody else wants and a lot of times they deal, it's actually, it's historic for the whole Northeast, it's mostly pit bulls or pit bull mixes. But now, we're moving on a trend because what I wanted to do four years ago was now finally come in fruition, where I wanted to privatize the sheltering of the animals. Not so much that the private industry is any different, except the fact that they coordinate better, they have funds available to them, they network better, they have programs in place to address the socializing of the dogs, which is the main thing, to socialize them, to walk them. And we are in contract talks now to at least service out part of that sheltering and operations of the animal shelter, which is a good thing. And it came down to union issues, why it couldn't be done sooner, but then now we're at a point now where the table's set and things are in place that we have smooth transition. And that proposal went out last week, so we're hoping that we'll get a positive response on that. But I think privatization's the way to go when it comes to municipal shelters, just because of the networking involved.
Do you think we'll be there in four years from now?
I hope we're there in four weeks from now. Yes, I hope.
Okay, we're going to stick with this.
I want to hear the beep then.
You're replying.
I have five seconds.
You had like five seconds.
Roofrook, okay.
So, continuing in the same order, Matt Van Glad, you're next, and so, other than the obvious, you haven't been the point man for the town animal shelter for the last four years. Do you feel like we're any closer to solving problems at the shelter, how you would define them? And you can speak to us about how you would define them, why or why not? And where would you like to see the animal shelter four years from now?
Well, I'll answer the last question first. I would like to see that animal shelter in a different place that's not next to the dump. It would be nice if anybody that would like to adopt an animal would be able to have a nicer environment, perhaps walk and socialize with the dog and get to know the dog in a more scenic environment rather than across from the dump. And it's been a long four years, it's been a long 10 years. There's been a lot of struggles at the animal shelter. There's been a lot of people that are willing to step forward and volunteer and they're willing to do the dirty work of re-socializing some of these dogs that have either been abused or neglected or given up because maybe the family has lost their home. And if you look at the other side of the coin, what if you were to lose your home through foreclosure or be kicked out and you needed to get whatever your own dog? Wouldn't you like to know that the dog that you need to surrender through circumstances beyond your own control would be taken care of and would be socialized and would be offered up to adoption?
Thank you. George?
I don't envy Jim at all because when a municipality has an animal shelter like this, we've got employees, we've got unions to deal with, we've got people from the outside that want to come and volunteer to, you know, at the shelter. So, I really think the way we have to go is privatize. And I know Jim's been working on this and I think this is going to happen sooner than later, so I'm convinced in four years from now, we'll be in a better place.
Valenda?
Well, I think that we should, you know, start by saying the truth. The fact that the town has really let down the animals in the shelter, let down the volunteers, let down the tax supporters that support the shelter. So, in four years, and I hope in four weeks, it goes to privatizing the shelter. But that's not to say that we, meaning the town, could have done a much better job in dealing with our animals, dealing with the shelter in general. And there's no excuse for it having to come to this. Privatization is a failure in terms of our town mismanagement of the shelter. It truly is, just a failure.
Ruth?
I am appalled at the lack of urgency that...
Turn that on.
It is on. I'm appalled at the lack of urgency that the animal shelter has seen in this town. Four years have gone by and we heard excuses tonight from, and this is not a personal attack, it's just we heard, a former police officer, and I have many friends who are police officers, it's not about that, but a former police officer is blaming essentially an agency, the police department, for lack of any action for this animal shelter in which there has been documented abuse of our dogs. The dogs are not all pit bulls or pit bull mixes, there are sheppies in there as well, there are other dogs as well. I've seen them, others have seen them. They have been neglected. I said at the last debate in Calverton, I said at first, "It needs to be moved away from the town dump, it needs to be brought out from hiding, it needs to be brought into a place where the public can see it, where adoptions are facilitated, where people know what's happening, it's not a deep dog secret." So, the way we're treating our people is the way we treat our dogs. Thank you.
And James, you have...
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you. I never once referred to the police department at all, but yeah, as being a former police officer, yes, public safety is always at the top of my head, there's no doubt about it. And I am very cautious about what dogs come into our shelter, how they're treated, how they're socialized, and how they're adopted out, or even if they are able to be adopted out. I'm not going to put the public at risk that way. I will do all I can for the animals, I always have. As far as moving the shelter, there's a brand-new organization called the MTAS, Move the Animal Shelter. It's a 501(c)(3), they made their application, 51(c)(3), but they're a viable business and that's exactly what they're raising private funds to do, is create a new Riverhead shelter and a new location. And their goal is to raise that money as fast as they can. Their goal is to raise $200,000 in the first year. They only have one fundraiser so far and came up with $8,500, but they've got four more planned. It's a great move, it's a local grassroots organization, Denise Lucas is running it, we're working with her hand-in-hand, it's a great concept. Privatizing is not a failure. Privatizing is absolutely the best thing we can do for these animals, without a doubt. Thank you.
Yeah, I just thought of another question about that. So, next up is Matt Van Glad. Matt, do you support the imposition of a moratorium along Route 25A corridor in Waiting River? If so, what do you believe a moratorium would accomplish? And if you don't support a moratorium, what are the grounds for your opposition? Please be specific.
Yes, yes, and yes, I do support a moratorium in Waiting River. Not only does it make sense to the people that invested in Waiting River, it also makes economic sense. However, we need to have a moratorium without any development. There is one or two developments that are still on the table that can still go through with this moratorium. And that to me is a waste of money because it really doesn't give the moratorium any teeth. So, if I were to be elected in the office, I think we need to discuss this issue because we have a lot of people in the community that have come forward, have organized groups, and are not happy with the way Sound Avenue and Route 25A, how business has been conducted. And we need to have an open government, we need to have discussion, and we need to make sure everybody's on the right page, so the project's a success and so the neighborhood is happy and is successful as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And George, you're up next, subject of moratorium.
This isn't, you know, directed towards you, but in general, Republicans don't support moratoriums because we're big on property rights and jobs and, you know, it's like asking those guys at the end of the table to get off their donkey and, you know, climb an elephant. I mean, it's just not an issue generally philosophy that I have because moratorium's the most extreme land-use action that a municipality can take because it suspends completely the rights of the homeowner, or the property owner, whether it's commercial, whatever. And I think this moratorium seems to me, we have a study, it's going to take four months more to finish. The civic associations approved of this. There's maybe one project that this looks like it would stop. And a moratorium cannot be used to stop or delay a controversial development project. That comes to Suffolk County Planning Commission. You cannot do it with one project. And some of the people pushing this don't want any development. We need development, we need jobs, we need to bring up the tax base. So, I totally oppose it.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Valenda?
I just wish to, I just wish to take exception with my colleague about Republicans only respecting owners and property rights. I am a Democrat and I respect homeowners and commercial property rights. I also respect the average homeowner who wants the input into the process of how an area is going to be developed in the town. I don't see any contradiction whether you're Republican or Democrat or Independent to want input into a project that affects your town. That's not a partial, partial issue. As for a moratorium, yes, I support a moratorium, a temporary one, to ensure that any development, and there will be development in town in Riverhead. We want developers to come to our town and develop and grow our town. But we also want input. And I don't see any contradiction in wanting a community, be it a citizen or a community group, wanting input into such a project that's going to affect our town.
I too support a moratorium, which means by definition temporarily, on building in Waiting River. I also grew up in Waiting River most of my life and saw it built up badly. Like I said at the last debate, the first thing you see when you come into town now is McDonald's, that is not Waiting River. We are much more than that, we're a beautiful town. And I support the moratorium until we have a thorough study that everybody, every one of you, the voters, understands and knows what the plans are, what the proposals are, and what the environmental impact and what the traffic impact on the plans are going to be. That has not been done, that has not been revealed. In addition, coming from a farming family myself, my grandmother, my great-grand uncle built the Big Duck, my grandparents ran the duck farms and handled the cranberry bogs that were part of the developed land on Route 58 and ruined that land. I support the moratorium because we have empty space that is not even being used there now, stores. Thank you.
And James?
Actually, Dunkin' Donuts is probably the first thing you can see when you're driving the Dunkin' Donuts when you're driving the Waiting River, if you looked to the left there, but anyway. I was wishing I was on the side of Calverton, but you know, I went to a meeting this past week with the deputy supervisor and the planner and our town attorney to civic roundtable, referenced the Nightland and referenced the quarter study that they're doing in Waiting River. And I don't support the moratorium only because I really don't think we need to. I think what's going on now with the planners is they're taking all, addressing the issues that the civics have, which is extreme, nothing. And then the concerns of the developers, and I think they're going to come up with a plan that they both can live with, which is exactly what we want to do in government, is to try to find, work with people and work with developers and the interests of the public. I worked Waiting River 10 years, more than 10 years, 30 years ago I was working that sector and I remember what Waiting River was like and what it is now, it's a different animal, unfortunately, the way it is, but I don't support it right now, I don't think it's important right now.
Thank you. I've lost track, who started?
Matt Van Glad. I'd like to take advantage of the rebuttal. Less is more of a Sound Avenue, it's a beautiful rural corridor, so is Route 25A. And I think we need to be inclusive and not exclusive, that's another important thing. Yes, we do care about the developer's rights, we do care about the developer's rights, but we also care about the rights of the homeowners that invested in this town and work hard in this town and some of them are struggling, so we can't forget about the homeowners either. And you know what? The whole thing does not make logical sense. How could you have a study and not include one of the projects that's key to the study? It's almost like throwing money away if we're only going to look at four of the portions and not one of the portion. So, we need to get our economic nutrition out of this study. Let's have a moratorium for four to six months as the study is finished and revisit the issue and see what the merits of the study are. And then we can make our decision from there and we'll have a happy neighborhood and a productive business. Thank you.
Next. George Gabrielson. Representatives of the Riverhead School Board have complained about the Riverhead IDAs granting of tax abatements to new businesses as well as the town or county purchasing additional properties to partner in preservation, such as the North Fork Preserve Site. They were speaking about that just at the school board meeting last night. What do you believe to be the appropriate role of tax abatements and why? And do you support additional public acquisition of property in the town of Riverhead? Why or why not?
All right, I'll address the second question first. I think there's got to be a balance. I think the North Fork Preserve, everybody recognizes, it's pristine, it's the most, one of the most beautiful pieces on North Fork. That's a balance. We have to have industrial, we have to have development, there's no question. So, I think open space, we have to look at it carefully. Some of the policies, like I said, we need jobs, we need tax base, so I'm not for all open space purchase, I think there's got to be a balance, absolutely. And now as far as the IDA goes, we all, some of us understand IDAs are separate boards, we have no control, they get picked every so many years, they're a separate authority, we can't direct them to do anything. I think their role in downtown Riverhead, as part of revitalization, is to give tax incentives. I think that's a must. I think Route 58, they shouldn't be giving tax incentives. So, I think we've got to find areas, like if you look on Route 58, every business is brother once you get there, this is the hub to the two forks. So, I don't think we should be looking at abatements on 58, but I think downtown, we have to look closely at.
Valenda, you're next, on the issue of tax abatements and acquisition.
Well, I'm of the mind that for downtown, yes, there should be some tax abatement, but the key word is some. We cannot afford to give away our tax revenue to multimillion-dollar corporations for 10 and 20 years. And I'll give you an example, the Atlantis Project just went from 10 to 20 years abatement. We can't continue to do that. We certainly can't do it on 58, it's a no-brainer. No business that wants to be on 58 should get a tax abatement. The market is such where Home Depot, well, I should say Lowe's want to be next to Home Depot, it's growing commercially, so there's no need for a tax abatement, we don't even have to think about that. The IDA should do more to bring business into our town. I wish I would support them, hold hardly to do so.
They've struggled with very, very poor infrastructure and very low increases in taxes for a very, very long time. And I know a lot about the waste in school districts across...
And I know a lot about the waste in school districts across the state, and that's part of what I testified about for the Senate Judiciary Committee on YouTube in 2009 and for which I was retaliated against. I would do it again. Our schools and our kids have every right to question why they're having less while big business is getting more. Of course, I support development and I do support tax abatements in appropriate places, but the current supervisor has provided tax abatements to his own clients, which is an ethical violation for an attorney to do, so that he can have, they can build Atlantis, which I support as a whole, and then a hotel, and then increase the tax abatement from 10 to 20 years, which I would find unacceptable, while our schools suffer further. Unacceptable.
I hope I remembered the question. I didn't quite, I didn't get the answer, but.
Do you support the use of tax abatements for your business in the town and do you support additional public acquisition of property?
Okay, well, I said an open space, so actually, open space is what preserves our environment and helps to be a draw for out here. I think as far as now, though, I think that the pot is run dry. The town anticipated acquiring, borrowing money for it, that's almost out. We do partner with the county. I think it's important to keep our rural heritage out here. I think it's a draw, that's why people come out here. As far as IDA, their job is to promote business. And how do you promote businesses to come out to the East End unless you give some sort of incentive? So that's what the incentives are there for. There's a misnomer then when you can idea abatement that you're losing property taxes, but you're not. If this cut, you pay a dollar a year taxes on that, now you're going to make it into a business, now you're going to pay $5 a year. And you get a 50% design abatement, now you get $2.50 and not the dollar. So there is a net gain to the town. It takes five years, maybe 10 years. So the abatements are structured in different ways. I did fight, though. I did not want Atlantis. I did go to the IDA as a councilman representing taxpayers, said that I felt the additional 10 years on the Atlantis was wrong, and I was out of it.
Yeah, I support open space. That's one of our gems out here on the East End. Do I support the IDA bringing tax abatements into the town of Riverhead, providing their good neighbor businesses that pay living wage jobs for families? Yes, I'm supportive of that. But I think in this downtime, we do not need to give the store away. What we need to do is concentrate on building our town's, you know, business climate. We need to work together as a town board. And I think in some ways, how we handle Waiting River with the people in the town will show to businesses that come to our town that we can work together as a people to support the business that would come in, not scare somebody away because we do not work together. We need to be inclusive, not exclusive. And by working together, we can be a success. Thank you.
It's on.
It's on? Okay, I tend to disagree with him somewhat. Down economy would need money, but also the down economies is the worst of times. These businesses need incentives to start up in Riverhead. If you look what's happening around America and what's happening in Riverhead, we've got stores coming back with incentives from the IDA. I think that's a good thing. Most people have got to understand also, you look at Atlantis, they are paying special district taxes, sewage, water. So it's not like a total free ride. So that's, that's my position on that. So I, and I also want to mention too, that the IDA is also a county IDA. Somebody can come to Riverhead IDA for relief. We can turn them away. They can go to Suffolk County IDA and get approved. So that's why sometimes the numbers are compromised. We've got to say, well, where are we going to be at, where's the county going to be at with these numbers? So it's a little more involved and it's probably more pressure to IDA to make some of the rulings they do.
Okay, our last question for the council people in the last round is first can be asked by Marlando. And it is this. Your campaign ads have said that you will lower our taxes. We all know it's one thing to say that and another thing to achieve it. How do you plan to accomplish this? Please be specific and also realistic.
Denise, is that what my campaign had said? That I'm going to lower taxes? Or I'm going to work to lower taxes?
You're going to work, how are you going to work to lower taxes?
Okay. Well, I think the first thing I'm going to do is give back. And that's give back a portion of my salary to the town in support of those agencies that I want to support. Because they have been burdened by the fast growth of our town. So the highway department, the building department, and our police department, I would contribute a great deal of my salary back to our town. Also, in terms of what to do to lower our taxes, I just think you have to be vigilant. You have to look at the numbers and keep on track and keep in mind that you're homeowners, you're handling somebody else's money. So you have to treat it like yours, penny pinch in general. So in general, generally, there's some other things that can be done to lower our taxes by reducing the cost of our town, you know, by putting GPS on our town vehicles, for example. Make sure that they're, they're where they're supposed to be. By putting some sensors into some of our buildings to lower our electricity costs. You know, I spoke to Lightburn, we're talking about 15 cents per kilowatt. That's less than what we pay in our homes, and it can be done even more effectively. Go back to tax abatements. You know, we, we, I certainly don't oppose tax abatement. I just want to limit them to a reasonable time, 10, 10 years, even 20 years is far too much. We can do performance evaluations of the various departments to see how they're functioning, what they need, how they can better do with what they have. Those are just some of the ways that I will work once I'm on the board to watch our taxes and to lower them eventually.
Thank you. Lowering taxes can be achieved by, first, in my opinion, I would scrutinize the budget as it exists. Nobody really sees the budget, and a budget consists of many things. And we are all entitled to see the budget in our town with no difficulty, but we don't get to do that. It's very difficult to tell what is happening in our budget. The first thing I would do is I would go to the budget and I would scrutinize every single item and I would look for waste. Extra cell phones, free cell phones, free perks to each of the board members, for example, should not be permitted. Any place that there's waste, extra cars in the police department that we don't need, that's waste. I would look for waste. The schools have suffered enough, I said before. In addition to that, I would also encourage looking into a municipal power authority so we can reduce our electric rates. But going directly, and that is done statewide, so it's not an unusual project, it just has to be implemented, and we can do that in Riverhead. We're a great town. That's where I'd start.
I think we've done a lot so far, I'll tell you what. I think that what you have to do with, there's only two ways. Either you cut services or you increase taxes, or you increase your tax base, I should say. And we're trying to do both. It's a dual edged sword. We're cutting the fat out of the budget. We're making departments or trying to encourage departments to do more with less. That's important. And the astronomical rise in healthcare and pension costs is unforeseen. The unfunded mandates that come through for municipalities on the East End, actually throughout the country, has to be paid for. So it's more than just whether we have a police car, but actually, that's a good way to go. I would definitely look into that next year, trying to lease smaller, more fuel efficient cars for those that aren't on emergency vehicles. And I think we can also look at energy savings using landfill or maybe a solar farm or something to help cut down energy costs. There's lots more that we can do to save energy costs in the town. We just adopted a green energy code. We have to live by that. Thank you, Jody, for that. We're working towards that.
Lower taxes. You know, the sales tax, for instance, that sends up to Albany and sent back to the county and nothing arrives to us. However, our police force patrol all businesses on Route 58 and Tanger, putting a strain on the homeowner. We also can lower, help to control taxes by streamlining our government, buying in bulk where we can. Maybe we could purchase salt in the summer and we won't have to pay exorbitant cost in the winter because we didn't stock up. We all know when we go to BJ's, if we stock up, we can save money, speed up the purchase orders, purchase orders for department heads. But most of all, if you elect me, I plan to work on the budget with the town board. And when it comes up time to be voted, I plan to vote on that budget and take the heat or not take the heat. Sometimes an extension is just as good as a yes or a no. Thank you.
Two comments. I know I've heard this at the second debate about the salt, storing up salt, et cetera, all. Pay attention, we just built two new salt ponds to store salt. So that capacity is there. And I also want to point out something Ruth had said about giving back to cell phones, saving money. I gave my cell phone back. I paid for my home, saved about $1,000 a year. So it's being done. I took a 5% pay cut in 2010 and took another 5% pay cut in 2011. I was on the team to negotiate. This is how you cut taxes, how you move forward cutting taxes. I was on the negotiating team with the CSEA. We negotiated a full year contract. First year, 0% increase in taxes in that payroll. Second year, 0%. Third year, 1%. Fourth year, 1%. It said before, this is probably one of the best negotiated contracts that we have done in Suffolk County, probably on Long Island, so things like that. We have cut, cut, believe it or not, the town board does look at the budget. We go line by line items. We're down to the point that we have to cut back maybe pencils and pens. The way we, we got to grow our economy.
George just mentioned that he and the town board negotiated the contract with CSEA. You know, I want to compliment him, but I also want to compliment the members of the CSEA who recognize what an economy we're in. And they're also giving up, you know, portions of their salary and their benefits because they recognize what a tough economy it is. So, you know, they're, they're in it too. They're our residents of our town and they're willing to give as well. Going back to your questions about taxes, I think one of the areas that we are completely missing is that EPCAL. I mean, if we can develop EPCAL and bring businesses in who are paying their fair share of taxes, that helps out the entire town and our homeowners. So I would like to support the IDA to get that up and running as much as possible once I'm on the board. Thank you.
Now we're going to have a two-minute closing statement, and we're going to continue in the same order that we've been going in. So you go first, closing statements.
Once again, thank you very much to Riverhead local and you, the community, the voters, for coming out tonight. I ask for your vote, for your vote. I'm a local. My family goes back four generations. My heart is in this town. I care about every square inch of it. I understand it. I know it. I've lived it. I've walked it. I've swam it. I've clammed it. I care about it. I will do whatever it takes. No one will prevent me from doing what's right. I will work with, in cooperation and with the board to get things done for you. I am here for you. I do not want any more secrecy. I will see to it that you know what's going on because it's your town. I will see to it that the taxes are lowered, that waste is cut, for real, that we don't run out of water like we did under Ms., under George's rule after a year and a half on the board. We almost ran out of water in the town of Riverhead. I will see to it that this town is run like a business and not run as a private men's club. I will be the other woman, the other woman on this board. And women see things differently. Not necessarily better, but differently. I will be that other voice, that other conscious. I will be the caretaker of your land, your future, your children's future. I understand it. I come from an educational and experiential background that is unlike any other of my opponents, and I will use it to the very best and the very benefit of you, the people. And for that reason, as an independent running on this ticket, I ask for your vote, and I thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you. Jody, not to exclude you for the female on the board. I run, I ask for your support again for another term. I do feel I'm entrusted with the community. I've been around the community my entire life. I honestly think I have the common sense to know your pain. I have the same pain that you have, going from week to week, wondering how I'm going to pay my bills or how much the taxes are going to affect me. It's important that we recognize where we come from and who we represent. I've always been a public servant from the time that I, as far back as I can remember. I represent you. I am you. I want to be your voice in town hall. I'm honest. I have a lot of integrity. And I honestly feel that I can do a good job for you, and I have done a good job for you. My door is always open. There's not one person I won't call back or go meet. And the last thing I ask is what denomination you are, what political affiliation. I don't care. I really don't care. You're a Riverhead resident. I'm a Riverhead resident, and I know every square inch of this town too. I've patrolled every square inch of it. I've seen things in this community that wanted me to serve this community even more, to help straighten out some of the things that have been wrong. I appreciate your support. I ask for your support again come November 8th. Thank you.
Hello, I have family that goes back eight generations, and I know where all the clamming and good fishing spots are, and I ain't talking. I remember riding down Riverhead when there were stop signs and not stoplights. I remember seeing potato fields and cabbage patches and all the old Riverhead. And I've seen how it grew, and I think that, you know, it's part of progress. And now with this economic downturn, we need to look and see, you know, where we need to go from here. As a community, we realized how much we treasured our open space and our farmland. It's kept the center and fulfilled our lives. Now an economic downturn has called us to scramble to find answers. We must not be hasty in our decisions. I'm for living wage jobs, fiscal responsibility, and the conservation of taxpayers' dollars. A study without a moratorium is a waste of people's hard-earned money. When approved projects are done with the study, are not included, it's completely useless. I think I'm getting short on time, so I'm going to switch off here a little. Traditionally, a one-party, a one-party system does not work in government. And I'm a Democrat, along with my colleague here, Marlando Williams. And on November 8th, I'm asking the town of Riverhead to seek a little balance, a little balance between development and the people in the town, a little balance between giving the store away through tax abatements and bringing in decent, well-paid jobs for our families in the town of Riverhead to live, work, and play in this town. Together, we can do it, and together, we can make a difference. But I cannot do it if you guys can't help me. And I promise, if I'm elected, I will be that man, that full-time councilman that'll put in his 40 hours a week, just like I do, driving a truck, making sure everybody's warm in the wintertime when it's snowy. I'll be there. Thank you.
There's two things, I really, I don't have my finishing spiel yet, I've got to address. Ruth made a point saying George Gabrielson almost let this town go dry of water. That could not be more untrue. From day one, myself and the supervisor had seen that we had a water problem in this town. We were going straight down, ready to get taken over Suffolk County, which would have meant a 20% increase in rates and a hookup charge of 1,500 to go to 5,000. We immediately started putting wells in. We were on our second well when we had the 2010 drought. We almost, she's right, we almost ran out of water. We would have been out of water if we could start putting the wells. And we've got three wells in now. We went from 87% capacity in this town, we could have not supplied the town. Now we're at 121%. You can just call me the water man. And the other thing I had to point out to Matt that's got totally wrong too, he said about the moratorium, there is one project. If it's one project, let's stop it. You cannot stop or delay a controversial development project, one project. You cannot do that with moratorium. That comes to Suffolk County Planning Commission. That's what they don't want. Anyone can go proposal, let's knock it out. Anyway, I just like.
You may not be able to, but I certainly could try.
You cannot by law lose it. It's nothing. Right. You got to wait. Now you get another minute. There's a shared vision in our town of Riverhead for renewed spirit and an era of prosperity, not pessimism. Performance, not politics. I am most committed and dedicated to achieving our mutual goals for our town, our Hamlets and our neighborhoods. We are moving in a most positive direction. You can feel the excitement as Riverhead is coming back. While some may point to Riverhead's problems without offering solutions. I chose to point with pride to the bright possibilities that stretch out before us. So let's keep Riverhead moving. So let's keep Riverhead moving forward. This board is the best choice for Riverhead. We don't want to change it. We don't want to go back. We want to move forward. Thank you. May God bless Riverhead. May God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And I do want to say that I do respect my two colleagues to my left, as well as my colleagues to my right, who are putting themselves out to serve the town of Riverhead. You know, you don't have to be here long to know that Riverhead has changed and is changing. You don't have to be here long at all to know that we've grown in our population. We've grown in our commerce and business coming to our town. We've grown, we've grown, we've grown. But the tax solution for our town growing concerns me. Concerns me greatly. And for the last two years, my colleagues to my left have given us the highest tax increase this year, over 4.5%. And it's scheduled to do the same next coming year, giving us two years in a row, the highest tax increase on Long Island. There's no excuse for that. You know, there's no defense for that. You know, if that's what you want in terms of representing you in your, in your, in your wallet and in your home, then you need to vote for my colleagues to my left. But if you want someone who can represent you, keeping in mind your concerns for balancing your own budget at home, then I think you should look at me because I would certainly do that once elected to this board. And I certainly will have an open door to hear all that comes to air their grievances in and out of my office.